All right, it's 5 o'clock. And this is a City Council workshop on a proposal regarding missing middle. Want to welcome everyone here that's watching at home, but then also that's here in the audience with us. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Thomas, who will lead us in the pledge. Councilmember Thomas.
(Inaudible).
Mr. Johnson, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Fugid.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie. Councilwoman Parker.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Testerman.
Here.
And Councilman Thomas.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. All right, well, now we're going to get started with our review of a proposed missing middle housing plan. And I want to welcome Mayor Kinkanen, who's going to give us some introductory remarks. Welcome, Mayor. Glad to have you joining us, and we're looking forward to your, to this proposal and your remarks.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Roberto, members of council. I appreciate you all holding this workshop. It's a very important topic, and I appreciate all the time and attention you're devoting to it today, and that you've devoted to it for the last three and a half years plus. Knoxville is in a housing crisis. More people are moving to our city than ever before, and people born and raised here want to stay. This mismatch between the need for housing and the available supply of housing has created a lot of hardship. Addressing this crisis has been a huge priority since I took office, and will continue to be a top priority in my second term. We need to augment our existing housing strategies, and we need to adopt new solutions. Tonight, we are sharing a new solution: middle housing. The housing crisis requires some immediate Band-Aids. We need to help people who are struggling to pay their rent, and who are at risk of being evicted. We also need long-term cures, effective ways to increase the amount and types of housing throughout the city and at all price points. This council has helped shape and support many strategies to address the housing crisis, including, and this graphic up above is some of the stuff that you've been supporting and helping to shape, redevelopment of bided property, improving development services, overhauling our zoning ordinance to encourage mixed use along the corridors, tax incentives for affordable housing, KCDC projects, energy efficiency programs, and improvements to CAT. Helping, you'll see, middle housing is just one small piece of this puzzle, and it's currently, if we had a video animation, it's currently missing in much of our city. So I just wanted to illustrate that this is just one part of a bigger housing strategy. As you all know, helping our most vulnerable neighbors is essential to the health of our community. I'm so proud of our commitment to a minimum of $50 million in local funds towards the creation of more affordable housing. I'm also proud of our efforts to develop permanent supportive housing at Caswell Manor, Liberty Place, and Callahan Flats. We look forward to updating council on our comprehensive housing strategy at a future workshop in the coming months, and I'm working with Vice Member Roberto to plan that as you guys address other topics in upcoming workshops. But tonight is about middle housing. Let me set the stage. At any given time of your life, you may need or prefer different types of housing. You may be single, married, divorced, widowed, with kids, empty nesters, wanting a yard, not wanting a yard. You may be struggling to make ends meet, or you may be making six figures and doing just fine. Maybe your parents move in with you. A three-level house may be perfect when you're 35, but not so good when you're 85. So 100 years ago, it was easy for people to build a variety of housing types to accommodate these different needs and preferences: townhomes, duplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes, and single-family detached homes. Neighborhoods had a diversity of housing sizes and types. After World War II, across the country and in Knoxville, land use rules were changed. Cars were available to the masses, and spreading things out, segregating land uses, was seen as the remedy for society's ills. By the 1960s, only two types of housing remained easy to build: single-family detached homes and large multifamily apartment complexes. And this is what most of Knoxville's housing stock consists of today. Now, let me be clear: there's nothing wrong with single-family detached homes, and there's nothing wrong with large apartment complexes. But we have realized that spreading things out has considerable downsides for our health, for the cost of infrastructure, for our ability to age in place, and for our ability to meet the demand for diverse types of housing. So missing middle is really a case of what is old is new again. Our missing middle housing proposal is a path to creating more sustainable, walkable, equitable neighborhoods. Our middle housing proposal does not mandate that anyone build a particular type of housing; it merely makes it legal for middle housing to be considered. It gives property owners more options while still protecting what makes our neighborhood special. Our middle housing proposal will also increase our housing supply, a crucial remedy to our housing crisis. I want to thank all the city staff who've worked so hard on this. They're going to be, you're going to be hearing from all of them later this evening. And now, I'm going to turn it, I also want to thank all the members of the public who participated in the stakeholder meetings and the community open houses to share their concerns and ideas. And now, to get into the nitty-gritty details, I'm going to turn it over to our lead on this effort, the one and only Cheryl Ball. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it, and we'll turn it over to Chief Policy Officer Cheryl Ball. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us here today. I want to start our evening by recognizing a few key players in this work. First of all, is Erin Gill, who presented to this body March 30th, when we had visitor from Opticoast Design in town, and really has championed getting this movement going to make sure that we could answer your call related to that workshop. But, the team, we've had eight different departments really work on this in various and sundry forms, but the core team of individuals are Brian Berry, who is coming, not here, but he's going to be here. He's the Deputy Director of Plans Review and Inspections. Christina McGrans, who is the Staff Attorney. Amy Brooks, who is the Executive Director of Knoxville-Knox County Planning. And Lindsay Crockett, who is the Principal Planner and Design Review Program Manager with Knoxville-Knox County Planning. And this team has had a heavy lift. They've done an incredible job, and they deserve lots of kudos for putting together a really strong plan. I also want to thank Carter Hall and Kevin DeBeauz for their support of this initiative, and Carter is running point on the PowerPoint tonight, so thanks so much for that. So, missing middle housing are house-scale buildings in walkable neighborhoods. It's neighborhood complementing housing with simple, well-designed options between the scales of single-family homes and mid-rise or high-rise apartments. Missing middle housing is about creating a diversity of housing options for Knoxville. So, why is it missing? Over the last 75 years, zoning has sort of pushed housing into single-family residential and mid- and high-rise apartments. We are, we have, across the country, started to see more townhomes, but there's no single thing that caused this to be missing. It's not exclusively zoning. There were a whole host of things, but we stopped building this type of housing. But we used to do it really well. You could even order it from a Sears catalog. It's important that we note, you probably recognize at least one of those as something that you could very easily see here in Knoxville. Here's a couple of examples, additional examples. I think most of you have seen plenty of examples. So, why middle housing in Knoxville? This is about increasing housing options at a variety of sizes and price points. Of course, we want to expand the housing stock overall and eliminate barriers to the development of missing middle housing types. When we think about our demographics, we recently received some updated information from the American Community Survey indicating 40.8% of Knoxville households are single persons, and 80.1% of households do not have children under the age of 18 living in the home. Across the nation, those under the age of 35 and over the age of 55 are most aggressively seeking middle housing. As our demographics shift, the types of housing available also needs to shift. We need housing in Knoxville. Making it easier to build missing middle housing is one of many ways to address housing here. So how did we get to this point? Opticoast Design did a scan of Knoxville. They completed in the fall of 2022. This body held a workshop, as I mentioned earlier, with Opticoast Design on March 30th, and then city staff also presented. As a part of that conversation, we ask you very directly, how, let's talk about this. How much do you want from us? Do you want us to pursue and move forward with plans? And we got, not only during the meeting, but after the meeting, quite a resounding yes, we want you to move forward with plans. So that's how we got here today. So city and planning staff have been working diligently on a proposal. Missing middle, the missing middle scan specifically identified zoning code barriers, the areas of town best suited for middle housing, and recommendations to help Knoxville specifically diversify housing stock. The best opportunities for middle housing are walkable, bikeable, served-by-neighborhood, servicing businesses, close to transit routes, and potentially close to existing multifamily or middle housing. Much of the neighborhoods that we are proposing have these examples of middle housing in them, mostly from well into the previous century. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brooks.
There we go. Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, so now, we're gonna, so as Cheryl just touched on, missing middle housing types are most successful when they are located in an existing walkable, or newly-built walkable area. So by walkable, we mean something to walk to besides more houses. And so for the purposes of the work completed for the missing middle housing scan, walkable describes places where a person can walk or bike to fulfill some or all daily needs. These environments accommodate vehicles, but might not require one for every trip. And so this map illustrates current residential zoning within a walkable environment, and was produced as part of that scan. And the map illustrates the walkable centers that are either ideal for missing middle housing, or appropriate for missing middle housing, and are either a five- or 10-minute walking or biking distance. And areas that are ideal for this type of housing are small block lengths, a well-connected street network, and nearby services shops that can support a high degree of walkability. And when we talk about missing middle housing ready or supportive, a well-connected street network with a mix of block lengths that provide a walkable foundation, that will support missing middle housing types and enable pedestrian scale redevelopment to occur on adjacent commercial properties. So for Knoxville, based on these definitions, the most walkable neighborhoods are those located near downtown or around the historic core. Next slide, please. So as part of this analysis, the missing middle housing, it was recommended that Knoxville first focus on areas of the community that are ideal or appropriate for missing middle type housing, and these are neighborhoods that may have many walkable characteristics and existing infrastructure that may be ideal, but may also have certain elements that might still be missing. And like I mentioned, they may be in or near downtown. And many of these areas, when we look at Knoxville, are currently classified as traditional neighborhood residential, or what's referred to as TDR, in the city's land use plans. The characteristics of TDR, as described on the slide, align with the characteristics that have been identified as ideal for middle housing, and those are small or smaller lots, sidewalks, alleys, narrow lots, located on a grid. Next slide, please. And this is just a map that illustrates, in yellow, the areas that are currently classified as traditional neighborhood development, or that TDR. And these are, we've shared those at the open houses. And so now, we're going to, next slide. Yes, thank you. Now, we'll get into the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. These are part of the materials that are in front of you. We have created a new section, a proposed section in Article IV, called Residential Neighborhood Districts, that is specifically focused on the standards for middle housing types. The standards can be applied in RN2, RN3, and RN4, and as I just mentioned, are located in that TDR land use classifications, which aligns with our currently adopted land use plans. We have included a statement of intent and developed a definition for middle housing types that will reside in the definition section, which is Article 2.3 of the code, and that, that particular definition references this section if it's approved. Next slide, please. So Article 4.6A provides definitions of each type of middle housing, and these descriptions include details on height, scale, design features, and these may differ from the base zoning code, but they'll only apply to the middle housing types. Next slide, please. We have proposed the addition of a new table, developed specifically for middle housing types, that identifies the type of housing by zoning district and whether or not they are permitted. All proposals for permitted missing, middle housing types would be reviewed by planning staff. And highlighted in yellow in this chart are housing types that are currently permitted by right in the base zone without special use approval, however, they're without the standards currently proposed before you as part of these amendments. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay, and she's going to walk you through the rest of the proposed code changes.
Okay. So, one of the recommendations from the missing middle housing scan was to allow all middle housing types by right if clear standards are applied, to control building height, footprint, parking and parking location, building entry and frontage, and streetscapes. So that's the framework for this effort, for the dimensional and design standards that follow. The intent of these standards is to encourage house-scale buildings with a lower perceived density. So they accommodate multiple units, but they, their footprints are similar to single-family houses. The heights are not taller than the context. The standards will regulate available housing type by lot width. So currently, housing forms are regulated by lot area within the zoning district. The middle housing scan pointed out several issues with regulating by lot area, which I believe builders are quite familiar with. Existing lots, in particular in these areas, they don't always contain the minimum required amount of lot area, so to accommodate a middle housing form, say if you wanted to build a duplex, lots might need to be assembled with adjacent lots via purchase, or parts of adjacent lots via subdivision, which is costly and time-consuming. This also results in lots that are larger than existing lots in the area, which can have an unpredictable result on the size and number of the buildings on the block. So using the lot width to regulate means that these housing types can fit on existing lots, and that maintains the existing pattern of the streetscape while still accommodating additional housing units. Next slide, please. So there's the table on the right. This is a new table. It'll be Table 4.3 if approved. It establishes the dimensional standards by which these types are approved, and they supersede the dimensional standards in Table 4.1 of the residential code. So there are standards to regulate that minimum lot width, with and without an alley. That's acknowledging the possible need for a driveway access coming off the front. Maximum building width and depth, setbacks, and height. One note here, I think, is relevant to discuss, the building heights are measured in stories. So the scan noted that stories are a more effective way to ensure new buildings are compatible in scale with the context. In two of the three zoning districts that are affected here, the maximum building height is 35 feet, and three stories could technically fit within a 35-foot overall max, but a three-story building is likely out of scale with the existing development pattern in these streets. There's a definition for story and half-story in the code. There are also definitions for building width and depth, so review of that building footprint is consistent across the types. And then finally, there are standards for dormer size and placement. That's related to that half-story, and that's aiming, again, just to keep things in scale with the neighborhood context. Next slide, please. So, the parking, one element from the middle housing scan, it noted that current parking requirements are understandable for typical multifamily developments that aren't in walkable neighborhoods. However, for middle housing developments, a different approach is needed. They also noted that there is not a need for more than one onsite space per unit. Requiring more than one space per unit makes site design for these forms pretty challenging, because the typical lot could accommodate, that could accommodate middle housing, in particular in these areas, is the same size as most single-family lots, and only so much parking can physically fit with the building there. So that image on the right, I think, is really representative of how much pavement occurs when there's a fourplex with two spaces per unit compared to one space per unit. So where applicable, these parking standards supersede the off-street parking requirements. Overall, the standards require one space per dwelling unit. There are other elements, such as reduced landscape buffers. Parking areas for multifamily developments typically require a 10 or 20-feet landscape buffer, and the standards here would reduce it to five with a fence or a wall. There's location criteria for parking, so parking is, one of, one goal of which is to ensure that the front yards aren't taken up by parking. Parking must be placed in the interior side or rear yards, accessed by an alley when operable alleys are present, or accessed by a driveway that extends past that building facade line if no alley is present. And this is similar to the current code for the infill housing overlay and the infill housing design guidelines. There are also some standards related to design, parking design prohibiting front-facing garages and circular driveways in the front yard. Next slide, please. There are also design standards. These are really just intended to guide the construction of new buildings that are similar in footprint, height, and placement to the context, but allow for flexibility and generate visual interest. They're relatively simple, they're informed by the neighborhood context, and then existing design guidelines that we've already been working with for decades, like those for the infill housing overlay. There is precedent for design standards in the code already. The established neighborhood zoning districts, the EN neighborhoods, new buildings and additions in this district already receive planning staff review for design standards. So there are standards for roof lines, walls. There's a list of design elements from which applicants can choose three. Again, these are relatively simple elements, things that may be included anyways, like a front porch or eve overhangs. And then there are standards for orientation to the street. So townhouses are required to be oriented parallel to the street instead of perpendicular. Front elevations of these buildings need to face the street with at least one ground-level entry to the street. I think when people think negatively about a duplex, the example that comes to mind is often that 1980s front gable massing where the two entries face the side, and there are no windows looking at the street. So the intent here is to maintain that existing street-facing character of the neighborhood and not create situations where buildings don't engage with the street at all. Next slide, please. We also have standards for conversions. So one tactic to, you know, incentivize and support use of our existing housing stock is standards that allow conversion of existing buildings to middle housing types via interior renovation or addition. So the available types would correspond to Table 4.3, that's the types that are permitted in the zones, and then the dimensional standards table as well. There are relatively simple design standards here. Additions can't be made to the facade, they must be made to the rear side elevations. Some additional height can be accommodated with dormers, but really, they just stress compatibility in height and scale. So it can be easier and quicker to build an addition, it can be less expensive than demolishing a house and building an entire new one, and it's definitely more sustainable. So it conserves that energy that's already embodied in the existing building, there's less construction waste going to the landfill. The historic preservationist saying is the greenest building is the one already built, so allowing for conversions would allow us to work with that. Next slide, please. So the final element of the code here, so per 4, 6, GB in the code, no variances can be granted for the middle housing standards, so these are not intended to be heard by the BZA. However, there are instances where it might be practical to allow for variation from certain standards due to existing conditions on the site. These would be approved administratively, and the code is set up specific, really specifically about these. It's lot width, corner side setbacks, and design standards. So we've stated the amount with the lot, the amount which the lot width and setbacks could be varied or decreased, and then the standards by which they're evaluated. So that allows for some wiggle room based on the site, but it's very specific in that framework, and it ensures that the other standards are being met if one element is being varied. So that's the end of the run-through of the code itself. I believe Cheryl's going to wrap up, and then we'll answer questions.
So, Opticoast, when they were here back in March, we had the opportunity to spend some time with that team, and they really strongly urged us, but planning staff and city staff had the opportunity to meet with them, and they encouraged us to create a strong base that could be built upon. They based, you know, based on their experience with cities across the country, they also emphasized that missing middle housing is not necessarily a good fit across all of every city, and the cities that are the most successful start with a smaller geographic area that has the infrastructure support that we've talked about with transit, walkable, bikeable, neighborhood servicing businesses, et cetera. This team has put together what we believe is a really thoughtful, detailed plan that covers all the best practices and marries those best practices with what is practical and reasonable for Knoxville. We believe this plan is sustainable and able to be implemented, and look forward to hearing what your questions are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. So, council, this is our opportunity for council questions and discussion. We do have our new audio system, so remember, you got to hit the Talk button, basically, and then you can also turn on your light, and I can recognize you. I was going to start with, you know, kind of a big policy question for the presenters. So, in looking at the document, you know, there's obviously opportunities for demolition of existing housing, but then there's also the conversion piece, and I can see why both of them would be in there. My question was about the, the conversion piece. When we heard from Opticoast before, my understanding was that we were going to try to have more conversions than demolitions, and that we were going to try to keep whatever, you know, comes out in line with what was going on in the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. And if I remember correctly from that presentation, there were a lot of different examples that we saw, where you could see driving by them and not knowing that it was a duplex or a triplex, because it looked like a single-family house. So, we had talked about maybe there being a catalog that you could pick from, and I didn't notice the catalog in there, but basically, just, you know, policy-wise, just wanted to get a sense for, you know, what are we, are we encouraging more the conversion? Are we, are we, are we trying to encourage the demolition? And are we trying to stay with that, you know, you're going to drive by and not notice that this is anything different in the neighborhood?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to start, and then I'll pass it to anyone else who has additional thoughts towards the end of the table down here. We really want to move forward with a pre-approved plan book that would provide plans that have been assessed by our internal teams, that would, we could give and provide to the various developers that would be interested in developing property. The plan, the current plan for a plan book at this moment would be focused predominantly on new construction across the country. It's new construction that has happened most prevalently when it comes to It's new construction that has happened most prevalently when it comes to middle housing and changes in zoning code. It's predominantly new construction on what was vacant land that has been the overwhelming majority of what has come to fruition for middle housing across the country. We want to do a plan book, but we kind of have to have this step first. We have to have the dimensional standards. We have to have the guardrails, the parameters under which we're going to support this type of housing in order to be able to do a plan book. We would love to move forward with that in 2024.
So I guess what I'm hearing from you, then, is that both are there, and they're both options, but it would tend to be more of a demolition because most of the time you're seeing changes? No?
No, no demolition. That is not what is happening across the country. What's happening across the country is new construction on vacant land, where there was not previously a building. That's the overwhelming majority of middle housing that is happening all across the country. That is the area in which our plan book would at least initially focus.
Okay, so what you're saying is, in general, when you look at places where this has happened before, or where they've addressed missing middle before, it is, you know, empty space, it's a vacant lot where you're seeing more of the new construction.
Correct.
What are you noticing with regard to existing housing? Is that being done mainly through conversion, or are they having to tear those down and build something else?
Good evening. I'm Brian Barry with City's Plans, Review, and Inspections Department. So the city currently works under the 2018 ICC codes. So any kind of conversion that was going to take place today would be required to meet either the 2018 IRC, the International Residential Code, or the IVC, depending upon the number of the units that would go in it. And so to convert an existing single-family residence or a duplex into additional units is going to require things such as fire separation, potentially sprinkler units. So there's a level of cost that's going to go into it for conversion of these properties that I think would have to be factored into. And of course, it's going to be site-specific, building-specific, as to whether or not even a conversion could take place in order to meet the building code requirements for life safety. So it's somewhat speculative. I'm not saying that it wouldn't take place, but I think it's uncertain exactly to the extent that it would be able to.
Well, and Mr. Barry, would the dimensional standards that we're looking at here, are those in line with what you would typically see in a surrounding, single-family home?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So in the proposal, there are dimensional standards. And so my question is, if the goal is to basically have someone be able to drive by and not know that they're seeing something different than a single-family home, are the dimensional standards in line with that thought? If that is what the goal is?
So the dimensional standards currently are in two for a single-family residence are a minimum 50-foot-wide lot width, which is kind of characteristic to what is in a lot of these neighborhoods that are shown here. So the lot widths shown and what was being proposed are, I think, characteristic with what is within these neighborhoods.
Okay. So the dimensional standards are basically the same as what we're seeing in the proposal? Our dimensional standards are basically the same as what you would see in a typical single-family neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Ryder, who had her light on.
Okay, I guess I have to push the button. And I don't know if I have to move this box. This is very confusing. I've sat down with staff several times over the past couple of months and talked about the evolution of planning and what was going into this. I think this is a very promising start at this proposal. And what I would like to ask my colleagues and anybody in the audience to do is to walk around, like not just drive through, but actually go walk through some of our neighborhoods, like my own. Our neighborhoods, the existing neighborhoods, were actually whole cities in the past. So they contain all of these things. They weren't single-family neighborhoods. They were whole towns, and they had all the types. And there's no emphasis on, as you're walking, oh, that's not a single-family home. It's just something different that's there. What is different is, at the time that many of these structures were built pre-World War II, there was an emphasis on certain roof pitches. Things were more in sync with the windows and the dimensions, okay? So when you walk around, those are the things that you're going to see. You're not going to see tiny windows and a large wall. Because the windows were the air conditioning. There's a certain rhythm and flow, and that is what I like about what's in here, is the -- I feel that's what you were asking about, Vice Mayor Roberto, is will they stand out? And when you're going up and down these streets, like when I go down Morgan, or I go down, can't remember the name of the street next to Kebrew, I think there's one or two down that way, they don't tend to stand out because of the roof pitch, the height, the dimensions. These are things that we've achieved with infill housing in the historic districts with the H1 overlays. And this is like a light version of that, where it kind of says, this will meet the flow of the street and things will not look out of sync because they will fit in. We have many empty lots in some of these neighborhoods, and this is just an option. Someone could build infill housing. I know of one example in my head. Somebody built a couple of different lots recently, and they built a large, single-family home because that's what they chose to do. It was their land, and they chose to do it that way. I did get, switching gears a little bit, I did get some questions, and I'm hearing you talking about demolition. When I listen to the presentation, I'm not hearing a focus on demolition. I'm hearing a focus on, these are design guidelines and standards for how you would fill in empty lots in our existing thing. Because the economics of demolition don't make sense. A house around the corner from me just sold for $100,000. It is a shell. It's gutted. It's in terrible condition. It doesn't have a clear title, which is why it was never on the market before. And it's 37-foot-wide lot. So it economically doesn't make sense. You can tear it down, and you could build something slightly bigger, but the size of the lot will really constrain what you can do on the lot. And when you make the standards in here where it has to be average of block face, all of the houses on that street are in sync with each other. All of the houses on that street, they were working-class historic houses, which, by the way, I want to point out, we've lost a lot of those houses in our area historically. Because remember, we were a whole city before North Knoxville, because some of them were built in the lower floodplain lands, like around First Creek Greenway. Many of those were taken eminent domain because they flooded every year, and the federal government was coming in, and it cost the government a lot of money. And so they gave people fair market value, and those houses were lost. So we lost a lot of the working-class housing historically, but we still have the other houses that were higher up the hill. And I'm going to run out of time, so I'm going to come back and ask more questions because I have some questions about the conversion part and what you can do now under the code as it exists. So I don't think the economics support demolition. My house is now worth three times as much as it was because of the economics that we have right now. 30-year-old Lauren could not buy that house again. And that's part of the issue that we have right now, is I have all these friends that are in their 20s and 30s, and there's nothing for them to buy. And much less could it make economic sense to demolish something that they spent $100,000 on? So.
Thank you. Councilmember Testament.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have several questions, but I kind of want to concur with a couple of things. I definitely feel like this is a start, but as we have heard for quite some time now, we are definitely in a housing crisis. And the only way we're going to see our way out of this is to get creative and build more housing to some type of scale or volume. And with that, then stabilizes rents, given the high percentage of city residents that are renters. I mean, so in order to meet the demand, then that starts to fix itself and address these exorbitant increases in rent. So the Opticos proposal did address across the entire city and walkable areas, but the administration's proposal, it's much smaller focus. And again, if we're trying to address this issue with any type of volume, I'm just curious why it was reeled back and has put a much smaller geographic area on this proposal.
I may pass this off also to Ms. Brooks, but the scan was for Knoxville, the entire city, but the recommendation to us directly was, don't necessarily start with all of Knoxville. Create a sustainable base that you can build off of, that you can implement, that you could grow if there's the desire from the community to do so. And as we started looking for, I'm going to let Ms. Brooks talk about geography, the TDR geography is what we had in existence that looked like it really lined up the best from an infrastructure standpoint. And so as we were analyzing the different options that we had, that was the one that we felt lined up the best. Do you want to expand on that, Amy?
Sure. Sure, I can. As I noted in our presentation, I showed the map from the scan that identified some larger areas in the city of Knoxville. But again, it's not the entirety of the city of Knoxville. There are other areas that were identified as potentially missing middle housing-ready. But again, Opticos did state, and this is directly from their report, that it's really important to apply these and prioritize these and fit these into certain areas. So kind of testing it out, as Cheryl just alluded to. And I do think it's really important, the land use classification that was selected for this, the TDR, these changes in zoning align with already-approved plans. And I think that's really important when you're looking at making proposals to update the zoning ordinance, that you do look back to your approved plans, and these are areas that have already been identified that meet the criteria for missing middle housing.
Okay. Thank you for that. I just, you know, I go back to this playbook as supposedly being designed for new construction. And I do agree that conversion is largely cost-prohibitive in so many circumstances, but we're also starved for land in the city. And so going back to putting such a tight perimeter around, it's baby steps when we're dealing with a gigantic issue. And so I would just encourage that we have a playbook, not just for new construction, but conversion for those that can make the numbers work and it be economically feasible. So quickly, I'm curious, how were the lot widths determined in the TDR areas? And was it just, well, is it based on like an average lot size in kind of determining what those modifications needed to be?
So we based the minimum lot widths with alley and without alley on, A, the existing conditions in these neighborhoods, B, the footprints that can accommodate these middle housing forms. But also, we based these dimensions, including the lot width, but also the building width and depth, on data that Opticos provided. They have a whole typebook of these idealized forms and how big a lot's width needs to be to accommodate a duplex, triplex, quadplex, et cetera. And as the professionals in this movement have implemented many municipal codes and seen it work, seen what works and what doesn't work. So we based that on those recommendations.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have a series of questions, but to kick it off, I want to thank, Mayor, thank you for outlining all the puzzle pieces. I think it's really important for the public to understand, this alone isn't trying to solve every bit of housing crisis we have. So there's bodies voted on many things and supported many aspects of that puzzle, so thank you for illustrating that. I also want to compliment staff. I think this, from a policy standpoint, makes a ton of sense. I think you all did a great job of the standards and the scale and all the technical aspects of it. I can see also sentiments that residents have that they can't necessarily articulate in a technical way, kind of built into this. So I applaud the analysis that's gone into this on top of the Opticos recommendations. I want to make sure that we fully articulate those changes for the everyday quality of life for people. So I have a couple kind of questions related to the TDR area. I think it's a good use. I think it's the right starting point, and I think it's a good classification to spring from. Just some context, I know the South Waterfront Form-Based Code provides a preview of what traditional neighborhoods can expect from this type of proposal. So I encourage, my colleagues are very familiar with this, but I encourage everybody to analyze the South Waterfront, particularly the SW1 area, because it includes this type of housing already. And so if you want to see the pros and cons and the trade-offs of what this would look like, I encourage you to go there because there's been new construction and conversion in that area, particularly on the east side of Chapman Highway. I think conversion is the biggest concern I hear when I stand back and look at all of this, is that when I just ask general residents, even of South Knoxville, who are not included in this first phase, which we'll discuss in a minute, what I hear is, people are more okay with infill and empty lots than demolition and conversion. So do what that what you will. There's a lot to unpack there, but I just think if I nail down the salient points that I've heard from people, their concern is demolition and replace. So I think some of these pieces in here that are meant to act as guardrails for that are good. I think there are others that we could potentially add. But I'll get off a stump for a second and ask a question. The current TDR designation, if that were to ever expand, that would come back before Planning Commission and Council. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's two different ways that that could come to you. An individual property owner can request a rezoning and a change in the sector plan. You all review those quarterly. Or if a larger area, a neighborhood, a part of the community would like to pursue that land use classification, you could go through a process, and that would go before Planning Commission and this body as well.
So in other words, a neighborhood could opt in to this?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there an official process for that? What does that look like? How does an entire neighborhood vote on that or apply for it? How does that work?
It might be similar to the EN. There is a process for neighborhoods to pursue an EN designation. You could think of it as a sector plan update. You could go through that potentially. You wouldn't necessarily have to vote. This body could direct staff to pursue that process. It could come a number of different ways. It just depends on the size of the geography. Does that make sense?
Okay. I definitely agree with, I like that you mentioned the sector plan and what role that plays and it drives this as opposed to ad hoc rezoning. I definitely think I prefer that path. Hopefully, all planners would agree. But do you think it's important to specify? But do you think it's important to specify that, the path of that process? And it's okay if we haven't figured it out yet, but it sounds like there are multiple options. Should we direct explicitly a certain path for that, for neighborhoods to go about that?
If they're wanting to pursue a large-scale land use classification change.
Yes.
Yeah, and staff would be happy to give some different proposals of what that could look like.
Okay. All right. Well, just given that the first district includes South Knoxville and South Knoxville's not technically included in this effort, I think that'll be a question I've already received and will continue to receive. So I think I want to nail down that process as soon as possible. So I'll pause and come back to page two later.
Thank you. Councilmember Singh. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. So I have a few different questions about the difference between what Opticos recommended versus those things that we're choosing to take out of that report and apply. One would be, Opticos, I believe, recommended us getting rid of sector plans, working towards that in the future. You can get back to me. Another point was, TDR is our criteria that we're using. What Opticos suggested was all walkable areas. Why did we choose TDRs and not all walkable areas? Another question on that is, we keep saying that we are testing this out in small pieces when Opticos has gone into quite a few cities, even Memphis started this in 2020. So there's a lot of evidence already out there about what is working, unintended consequences. We can learn from what others have done instead of us being so fearful in moving forward, especially when there's such a crisis.
So with the TDR geography, the scan shows, and the map that we showed earlier shows a broader cross-section of Knoxville as walkable communities that could be appropriate for middle housing. That's, you're accurate. That's correct. In our conversations with Mr. Perez and his team, they encouraged us to think about implementing this in a smaller geographic area to start. As we identified what were the geographic areas we had that best matched with this, the TDR is the one that we felt like aligned the best. Does that answer that portion of your question? Just one more point. We've continued to consult with Mr. Perez, and I even had a call with him today. And he is very much completely in support of this plan and thinks that we have, taking this particular geography as a starting point is an appropriate step, especially given the geography that it covers and the infrastructure support that is there.
Another, switching a little bit, the areas that we've identified for this, what percentage of the city is it?
Yeah, we have some data related to that. One moment.
While you guys are looking, and have you, if we were to, best-case scenario, maximize all of the space that is available in these identified areas, how many units could we maximum reach? What could we get out of this small piece that we're doing?
I don't think there's a way to answer that question. I mean, it depends on which type of middle housing is put where. I just don't know that there's any way that we could even.
Best-case scenario.
I have no capacity to, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I can, we can provide you with some statistics here. So there are 62, a little over 62,000 residencies zoned properties citywide. A little over 25% of those are zoned citywide or located in the TDR. Within the TDR, we have, apologize here, let's see. So vacant properties within the TDR land use classification, and this is just looking at the ones that we're talking about for this particular proposal. So that's RN 1, 2, 3, and 4. There's 2,039 vacant currently in the TDR. And then, let's see, we've done some preliminary analysis. So within the TDR, 78.8% of the vacant properties can accommodate a new missing middle housing type. And this is based on that lot frontage that's been identified in the proposal. A little over 1,000 of those properties can accommodate a duplex or triplex. 123 properties could currently accommodate a fourplex. And at least 113 properties could fit a multiplex, as currently proposed in the.
Okay. My last concern, then my time's up, is when I look at what we've designated and I look at redlining maps, they're quite similar, and that is a very large concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie. Oh, Fugit was first, I'm sorry. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. Some of my questions just got answered. Thank you, Councilwoman Singh, because I wanted to know about the number of infill lots and that sort of thing. My next question, and I apologize if I don't have this memorized, but I imagine a lot of people watching don't either. So how often are sector plans looked at? And are they on a regular review cycle? Because I think people will be interested in that if that's part of this process.
That's a very good question. They're not currently on a regular cycle. I think best practice is to update them every five years, 10 years, five to 10 years is historically, maybe a little bit longer, this community has pursued that.
Okay, thank you. I assume a large part of that has to do with staff capacity.
Staff capacity, and then we did, you know, the update to the city zoning code took a lot of staff time, both city and planning, and then obviously pandemic.
But just in general, I imagine they're rather staff-intensive to do sector plans, and that.
Yes.
Takes quite a bit of.
Yes, they are.
And that's sort of in complement to Councilwoman Smith's question, if a neighborhood wants to do it and it's part of the sector plan. So I'll leave that alone. You answered that question. The only thing I will say about this is I think it's important for us to remember that this is another tool in the toolbox. I think we, as a city, have got to realize there's no magic thing that's going to fix all this. And this is a piece. The way we're going to get the most housing quickly is large multifamily apartments like we've been building. That's how you get maximum capacity sooner. We've talked about this before. I know the city's working on it. The zoning allows it. We've got to figure out new tools to incentivize mixed-use development along our corridors where the infrastructure's already in place to do more housing. That's the fastest way to get this. And so to me, these are not either ors, these are both ands. And I think we are capable of walking and chewing gum at the same time. And so I would like for us to understand and for the community to understand that not everything fits everywhere appropriately. So I like where this is going. I do think it is a start. There are other opportunities to do this, but I gathered when we had our workshop in March, one of the conversations about a pilot was, A, for people to get familiar with this, because the last thing we want is people to kill it before it ever starts because they are so concerned about what happens that as it goes to change a community, people just shut it down before it starts. And the last thing I'll say, maybe, with along Councilwoman Smith's thing, what I hear is people just want stuff that looks like it belongs in their neighborhood. If it's a conversion and it looks like it, like everything else, and it belongs, and it's the right scale, and the materials look the same, and it keeps the character of the neighborhood, people are very concerned that the character of the neighborhood, from the way it looks, feels, and walks, changes. So I like a lot of what you're planning because that keeps that in mind. So I got all my questions answered, so I just talked. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Singh, I think, said it best, unintended consequences. And that's what I've been challenged with here recently from people across my district with some concerns as it relates to, you know, when the floodgates are open, how do we regulate one community or one district not necessarily getting flooded and oversaturated with duplexes and townhomes and all of the things that go into the missing middle? And I'm not certain if we have a mechanism to be able to regulate that once it's approved. And then housing that is, you know, once the housing is there, you know, will the rental costs really be such that people can afford necessarily to stay there? Affordability, I think, just depends on a person's financial situation. And so that's a question I've been tasked with recently. And then also, when we talk about, a lot of times, those properties that are vacant are blighted, and we look at where those are located, I can definitely understand those concerns. But also, when we talk about doing this thing in a pilot perhaps, just to see how this integrates into a community, because when we're talking about single-family homes and now we're putting, you know, duplexes and multiplexes a door or two down, there are people, I think, who are now starting to, giving some people some pause in these neighborhoods that are going to be potentially impacted. And so how do we ensure that there's not an oversaturation just because those lots or those properties are available in a particular area or neighborhood?
I, so far, what we have been able to glean from our Opticos friends is that this really is only happening in an incremental way across the country in neighborhoods. We're not seeing floods. I don't know that we have specific, when it comes to people's ability to do things with their own property, I'm not sure that we have a whole lot of restrictions. What we do have, though, is we have design standards to help make sure that it adheres to the existing character of the neighborhood. We have dimensional standards, you know, we have these, we've put these guidelines in place to make sure there are at least guardrails for how this construction would happen. Does anyone else have, do you have anything else to add?
No, I would just say that I'm not aware of any tools that we currently have at our disposal to limit, you know, like put a cap on the number of duplexes that you can have in a certain area of town.
Right. And I think that that's some of the concern that I've been hearing recently, is that if there's a street that has multiple vacant lots or blighted property that could, you know, if, once it's zoned, then absolutely, we have no control over that. And so, and we can have additional conversation as it relates to this. But I do think that it's important, maybe just to take a tour of some of those areas. I know that we looked at that briefly a couple of months ago, but I think take a deeper dive, and I think that's incumbent on me since I'm being challenged with this from people in my district as it relates to that. So, but again, I think we just, as you said, potential unintended consequences that once it's approved, we cannot regulate. So I do think something to think about, but we'll meet about that and maybe take some tours and look a little bit more in-depth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was hoping we could spend a little bit more time on the process for approving new projects. I know that the proposal is for this to be by right and that planning staff would work with any individual looking to develop or convert into middle housing. Is there an appeal process that's possible? Or can you tell us also more about that approval process?
Certainly, I can start, and then I'm probably going to ask Lindsay to walk you through how we do a couple of different approvals, because I think this one might be similar. Again, if this was approved, we'd want to flesh that out further with Plans Review and Inspection on how those would come to planning. But any decision of a planning staff member is appealable. It's appealable to Planning Commission, and then obviously, their decisions are appealable to this body. We currently review projects in the established neighborhood district, the EN district, that's staff level. We also do Level 1 reviews, a certificate of appropriateness in our overlays. Those are staff level, and I can let Lindsay, do you mind walking through that?
Sure. So as Amy said, we have, based on the zoning district or the overlay, we have different standardized processes for the planning staff review for each of these. We don't have a full implementation plan yet, but for example, if someone is applying for, going through the administrative review process in a historic district, we have a basic application form and a checklist for supporting documentation that we make available on our website and our office, et cetera, so that an applicant knows in advance what they'll be expected to propose. That's not always, people don't always start with us. Sometimes people start with their permit because they don't necessarily know they're in a zoning overlay or a zoning district that requires planning review. That's pretty normal. We work with them in that way, too. So we work within the Knox Plan System with Plans Review and Inspections and have that sort of cross-agency collaboration to notify the applicant that you've applied for your building permit, however, there's this step in advance. Either we reach out to them or they reach out to us, and then we take them through the process. I think with this one, there would definitely be some education on the front end, because those dimensional standards are different than what the average builder is used to doing. So I think that would be an educational opportunity for planning to take on. But also, we have a pretty well-integrated procedure of pre-application meetings and pre-application discussions with builders. So say that someone was considering a middle housing type. If this is approved, then we would be pretty well-versed in talking to them in advance and doing, you know, pre-application consultation on their plan to make sure that what they propose meets the standards.
And then, walk me through, and we can use infill or as an example, once those decisions are made by planning staff, they're posted somewhere publicly, and then there's a time period for appeal?
Yeah, I think that that's something we'd want to establish for this particular code. For historic zoning cases that go in front of the public body, in front of the Design Review Board or the Historic Zoning Commission, we post a yard sign. So applicant or folks that are walking around or driving around in the neighborhood see that sign and know that there's a review that's going on or just passed. It links them to a website, and so they can come and look at our website and see what that is and find the appropriate staff member to contact. Administrative approvals are posted on the website as well, but an applicant would, or, you know, an interested member of the public would need to know to look at them. So I think that that's something that would be important to integrate into this process, is how do we make sure that the public is aware that these are going on, whether we post a sign or another form of public notice like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rider.
So I have a couple of questions about, I have a couple of questions about conversion, then I have some questions about the specific dimensional standards. So I'll start with Mr. Berry, maybe you, or someone, can explain to me, when I look at table 4-. When I look at Table 4-4, middle housing dimensional standards, so a duplex, what does building width max mean? Does that mean the actual width max of the physical building, not the part of the lot you can build on? That's the physical building can only be a max of 40 feet?
That's correct.
Okay. So for a triplex, a building could be a max of 40 feet. The building depth could be 55 feet. So, okay. I just want to point out that quite a number of the houses in the historic district are bigger than this. And so when people say, "I'm worried you're going to convert something," the houses are too big to convert. They're outside your chart. So I don't know. Just an interesting thing I noticed sitting here measuring things. So, anyway. Mr. Berry, if I were to, if this chart doesn't exist, so today's code, RN2, if I, if someone had a property and they wanted to do a conversion, they wanted to, what, subdivide it, in RN2, you could come and say, "I'd like to subdivide my structure and I could make a duplex. I'd have to do a use on review." I'm just curious what the process is to right now do that.
It's correct. It says it's a special use.
Okay.
In RN2, you'd be required to have the dimensional standards for a duplex. So a two-family is 10,000 square feet, minimum lot area.
Any fire suppression or sprinklers?
There'd be fire separation.
So I couldn't just, so see, that's one of the things with our neighborhoods, the historic neighborhoods, that were subdivided in the old days when folks were moving, post-World War II, out to the burbs, and they'd take a house, they'd just kind of sort of board a door closed and do things like that. Remove, actually, enclose the staircase. That's actually a common thing. So you just lay boards over the staircase, take the railing out, and you have boards at the bottom. That's not legal, right? That's not code legal today?
I don't believe so.
Don't believe so? Okay. Well, I just, so, living in the historic district and having rehabbed some of those houses, the things that were done to subdivide the houses even in the 80s was literally fire traps. Like, absolutely not legal, absolutely not safe. I actually have an architect friend who has some pretty impeccable standards, and now, as a 40-something-year-old, he's like, "I look back at the things I lived in in Fort Sanders and can't believe I lived there," because they're not safe. And that is some of the most concerning things that I've seen in the historic districts. Putting crazy staircases on the outsides of things and boarding windows closed and putting entrances in a window that are, I mean, just bananas. Like, who came up with this idea? I'd love to be sitting at the table when they came up with this crock-pot idea to make a triplex, fourplex, sixplex. Because I've worked with many people who undid that stuff, and it's just amazing. So there are many people, maybe even here, who have stories about undoing some of that stuff. It's most entertaining. But I couldn't do that today, right? I couldn't get an address for something. I couldn't create a duplex by boarding up a door or a staircase.
Correct. You'd need to submit for plans review. It would be reviewed by building.
Okay. And what would it take for me, at what point do you have to sprinkle something? How many units?
I believe it's three or more.
Three or more units, I got to sprinkle it? So if I build, if we pass this code and I want to build a triplex, it's got to be sprinkled?
I'm fairly certain, yes.
Woo-wee! Okay. Last I heard, that's expensive. Just curious. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
We've got before us, Ms. Ball, you sent over an amended set of recommendations. I believe a recommendation was submitted to Planning Commission in August. We've had two public forums, if you will, where people can come see what changes have been made since that original submission to Planning Commission, based on those meetings and emails and input from the public.
Thank you. We, the comments and the input and the conversations that we had at the two community open houses, we've also received a lot of communication from the community just directly to us at the city. We've also had a, I don't even know exactly how many, meetings over the last two to three months with individuals, neighborhoods, et cetera. And all of that, along with, we had Optico's Design provide a peer review of our proposal. So all of those together sort of helped inform some of the changes that we made. The changes were primarily to reword for clarity, remove redundant language. We did make some changes to simplify some of the dimensional specifics to make sure that it was clear, even though we didn't necessarily always change those, we just tried to make them easier to understand. There weren't substantive, I do not like that word, that is a really hard word to say.
That's tricky. I'm glad you said it for me. I was going to ask that. Thank you.
Changes, and no changes to the intent of our proposal.
Okay, so no substantive changes to, you made me think about it and I got it wrong. No substantive changes to the recommendation. Okay. Next question. So I think the staff, I want to go a little different direction now. I think the staff's done a good job of listing all the benefits of this to our community. I think the list on the website is, you know, I'll read a few of them off because I think it's very important that people understand what this, the fabric and the quality of life this inserts into the community or joins the community. So a few of these are add more financially, attainable housing options at a wide variety of price points, smaller, more attainable homes, pathway to ownership, incremental increases in housing to existing neighborhoods, providing housing for more than one family on a single lot, opportunities for families to live in walkable neighborhoods, to help residents have more diverse housing types at a variety of sizes and price points. All that, I think, is a very good picture of why this is important. With that said, I think similar to Councilwoman Singh, I have a question in terms of how much this covers of the city, particularly within the TDR. What's the mix within that residential TDR area between RN4, 3, and 2?
Yeah, so the RN2 is 62.7% of the land area of the TDR. It's 2,782 acres. The RN3 is 1.8% of the land area in the TDR, relatively small, that's just 79 acres. The RN4 is 2.9% of the land area in the TDR.
Okay. So heavily focused on RN2 in terms of the opportunity here?
Correct.
Okay. RN1's not included, and I know that, I don't know if you have that number, since it's not included in TDR?
We do. It's 298 acres.
And what percentage would that be?
You can do that math.
Okay. Well, I've got a question for Mr. Berry while you do some phone math. Is there a principal use difference between RN1 and RN2?
As far as what's allowed from a principal use? Yes. Give me just a second.
Currently?
Do you have a specific one in mind as far as a use? If I'm understanding your question, is there a difference in principal uses in RN1 and RN2?
Is there a difference in principal use between RN1 and RN2 currently?
There are different principal uses that are allowed in RN1 versus RN2.
Okay. Can you, do you have those handy?
Yes.
Thank you.
While he's getting that, it's 6.7%.
Thank you.
So is your question related only to residential?
Yes.
Okay. So a single-family residence is permitted in RN1 and RN2. Two-family, that is a duplex, is special use in RN1 and RN2.
Sorry, just to shorten us here, since my time has expired, is there a difference, not are there similarities, but is there a different principal use in RN2 or RN, versus RN1?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I promise it's not a riddle. Is there, in the use table, is there a principal use difference between RN1 and RN2?
So there's a list of principal uses that are permitted in the various districts, but I'm not sure if you're getting at a specific.
I'll come back, since my time's expired, and give it another shot, okay?
I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was hoping we could go back to the dimensional standards, get a little bit more clarity around that. Because we have building height listed as, listed in stories, but we don't have a maximum building height beyond that. Is that correct?
So the, it's number four. We say, "Building heights shall not exceed the maximum building height of the base zoning district." So for RN2 and RN3, that's 35 feet. For RN4, that's 45 feet. But then it says, "Or the maximum height in stories as noted in Table 4-4, whichever is less."
Okay. So the height of the stories may vary.
Correct.
But it will always be limited to two, you know, or 2.5 or whatever it is, and the base zoning maximum building height?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There's so much about this that I like. Really, what my issue is, is the areas that we're choosing to put this in. It makes me wonder, when Optico's identified walkable neighborhoods, they did this in many different areas, yet we're choosing to do it in some of the, well, the areas that are less affluent, the ones that were traditionally in redlined areas. And it makes me wonder if we are starting here because there's less pushback. So although I like what we're doing, it's the areas that I'm concerned about, and what is the unintended consequence of going into just redlined districts? I know that's not the point, but that is what's happening, by looking at the map.
I can speak to some of that. So I think when you look at the redlining map, it really does show the whole residential city at the time. That was November 1939. That map, most of the areas on that map obviously align with the traditional neighborhood boundaries, because that, those are our traditional neighborhoods. They were our central city at that time. I think an argument could be made that the middle housing is missing because of redlining-influenced zoning codes. So obviously, all zoning codes are relatively, you know, intertwined with these redlining concepts, as they are today. These redlining-influenced zoning codes pushed residential projects into two extremes, single-family houses and then larger-scale apartments, and the aim here is to rectify that. The history of these areas was significantly more dense, but due in very large part to redlining and urban renewal, it was made less dense in the 1940s through the 1990s. These standards, I think this project aims to restore these original density patterns and the housing forms that existed prior to redlining. And so, you know, thinking about it being aligned with redlining means that isolating this area instead of the whole city, it could have a negative effect on these areas, which, you know, we don't know all the unintended consequences. But it is allowing for additional investment and a raise in property values, et cetera, in these specific areas for the people that own property there now. So it's adding extra opportunity in these areas instead of disincentivizing further investment, which is what those redlining policies did.
We can't control what type of the price point of this housing, right? We're hoping that it is very varied. But it's quite likely that they're all luxury condo-looking-like fancy places, and then the gentrification and the people who were there get moved out again. So this is a concern that I have by using these areas specifically.
Councilmember Testament.
Thank you. Yeah, I keep hearing a lot about unintended consequences, and I guess when we're focused on building on empty lots, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure what those are. I mean, and how, why they seem to be so detrimental, again, while we're, you know, we're focused on new build. So anyway, it just, I feel like there are a lot of unintended roadblocks a little bit, or excuses, but I go back, and if I have this stat incorrect, let me know, but if there are only, what I'm hearing, 130 lots that are larger than 55, 55 feet, you know, I don't see the housing opportunity to address, again, any real scalable impact and looking at just duplexes really, which is, you know, to me like cutting a tree with a butter knife. But is that accurate, the 130 lots that are over 65 in the proposed area?
No, I don't believe that's correct. So over, you said over 55?
I think that's what I heard. Or over 65 either. I mean, it's.
Lot frontage within the TDR, over 54 to 63 feet is 123. And then there's 60 lots that are 63 to 71.
All right. So less than 200, but it's still, you know, pretty small. So I guess, again, I'm looking at the vast problem we have and then focusing on TDR and really sort of what, to me, seems like a pretty small opportunity to address this problem. I do have a question on the sprinkler that Councilmember Ryder brought up on that issue. Are there not any solutions or workaround? As I recall, from the Optico's and their involvement with Memphis, I think there was, that they obtained some kind of Fire Marshal exemptions to make that an easier process.
So we've had several calls with the folks in Memphis, and actually, they have submitted to the state Fire Marshal for approval, but they do, they have not yet received approval. They've submitted, I don't, I don't want to speak for exactly how many different proposals to try to get a relaxation of some of, or a replacement with a different fire suppression measure, and they have not yet had approval from the Fire Marshal.
Would that not be something that, among other things, that we could look at to, again, sort of ease the ability for, on the conversion?
They have not been successful with getting approval from the state Fire Marshal for the proposals that they have put forward, and they have done several of those. So we have a call periodically with them to stay in touch with the status of that, along with the other four large cities related to missing middle housing, and to stay connected with them about that type of progress that they're able to, because they're further along in that process. So we're, did you want to say?
I just wanted to clarify my numbers. That I gave you. I apologize. Those were incorrect. So for frontage width, so we're talking about anything that's 45 feet or more, we have, there's 1,600 properties that have been identified, 1,607, that are greater than 45.
That are greater than 45?
Yes. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to address a couple of things. You know, I disagree with, you know, saying that there are roadblocks, because even when it comes to affordable housing, there's a
Just want to address a couple of things. You know, I disagree with, you know, saying that there are roadblocks because even when it comes to affordable housing, a road, is a roadblock community members who say, "I don't want it in my backyard, I don't want it in my neighborhood." And so, I'm going to disagree with that as far as roadblocks. It's concerns, and yes, there is such thing as unintended consequences for people who live on fixed incomes, people whose salaries have not increased as aggressively as the cost of living. So whereas most of us who are fortunate to have decent salaries or can, you know, are in a different tax bracket, there are some people that property value's going up means property taxes going up, and that's more cost burden that they are struggling to be able to afford. And so where we're talking about a lot of these, even with vacant lots, you put a new, a new bill there that is going to improve the value in neighborhoods and to increase housing values. And so I'm just saying that we absolutely have to take that into consideration as a body, and especially in my district, which houses the most number of Section 8 affordable housing apartment and neighborhoods in this city. You know, so the people who are reaching out to me in my community, and I also share that concern at this point, how do we regulate that from being oversaturated? Because once it's approved, it is out of our hands, once a developer or an investor owns that property. Right now, the only thing that we are, we are discussing that we can control is how it's zoned, the design, the size, but we cannot, we'd be remiss if we did not consider some of these concerns. And yes, there are unintended consequences that people in these existing communities could face. And so that, that's what I'm talking about and I'm concerned about today. I mean, the design, the sizes, of course, we know that those things are going to fit in, but let's think about the neighbors there as well. I know that we've had these meetings with existing neighborhood associations, but a lot of the people that we're talking about, that those unintended consequences would have a negative impact on, probably aren't members of those neighborhood associations for various reasons. And this is why I stated earlier that I absolutely want to take a deeper dive into those lots and those areas to ensure that the folks in those communities understand what is potentially coming down the pike and what this body will be voting on going forward. You know, if anyone around the table doesn't understand that, I, I get it, but let's, let's be very mindful of the people who are not as advantaged as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I didn't realize it was my turn already. I really appreciate what Councilwoman McKenzie had to say and wanted to echo a lot of her concerns. And to that, I had two thoughts. I feel the need for more time, and not only in chance to review this, but a chance to ensure that those who are going to be directly impacted by this understand this process and what's being discussed and what we would eventually vote on. And then in addition to that, hearing the discussion and the concerns raised, well, I'd, I'd like to hear from the administration whether, as a first step, incorporating middle housing as a special use were, was considered as a first step.
We have some middle housing that is already under special use at present in some of the zones that are in existence. When we were going through this process, and Optico specifically recommended getting rid of special use because it is a barrier, it is an additional, it is additional time, it is additional money, it is additional steps that the property owner has to go through to get to a point of being shovel-ready. And so it was a recommendation from them that we work on eliminating special use opportunity or needs.
Gotcha. And I certainly understand it in, in certain situations, but it is also a process that brings more opportunity for public input into these new developments and more transparency. And then, you know, and I've stated this before, and I believe a colleague said this earlier, to truly get to the affordable housing, we're going to have to incentivize developers. And, you know, that could be something that's a part of, whether it's individual homeowners or whether it's a nonprofit developer, but that could be an incentive that's offered where, you know, certain fees are covered plus additional financial support. But that's just where my thinking is at the moment. How do we introduce, you know, there are certainly areas where we have middle housing and we have, you know, duplexes with the, that you can get on special use. But just incorporating these new building types and allowing the building of these new building types, even just as a special use, seems like a big step to me because we haven't been doing that type of development. And I think once the city, once the, you know, the broader city is able to see these developments, there may be more acceptance and excitement about seeing more of that type of development in our city, rather than communities feeling like something's coming at them that they weren't aware of and, you know, where we, we don't know how to, you know, ensure that we don't have a whole street that's, you know, transitioned over to town homes. You know, we, we're not able to put certain protections in place like other cities are that have more of this type of housing. So I think we just have to be very thoughtful as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah. So the, the comment was made about the selected map. There's been a couple of people bring up questions about the, the TDR area. So TDR, pretty much all of those neighborhoods existed at the time the redlining maps were made, and I think that is what Lindsay shared with us. And so that's why they reflect being in the redlining map. I think that's an issue of correlation, not causation. That's one of my husband's favorite sayings, is that something may look like it's correlation or cause, but it's not the causation of it, it's just the timing of it. So I look at the map, and I look at places off of Wash Pike, Holson Hills, Sequoia Hills, those are LDR, but they didn't exist at the time. Those are new places that didn't exist. And the TDR is descriptive of places that has alleys, wider streets, typically a lot of it has sidewalks and, and very narrow lots. It's the traditional old neighborhoods. So I mean, I just wanted to put that out there. The, when we had the other workshop on missing middle last year, I think, we had a lot of discussion about parameters and geographical boundaries of how to select a smaller area to make some changes. I think we talked about ADUs and duplexes, and, you know, we talked about, is 640 the boundary? There was a, there was a lot of public discussion about what the boundaries could be. Is it, is it the river? Is it Chapman Highway? Is it Clinton Highway? Like, what is that boundary? And staff went back and reviewed, and they came up with TDR as a way to do that. And I think looking at places that have the infrastructure, like alleys and sidewalks and grid-like development, you know, you can have a neighborhood with a sidewalk, but if it doesn't have cross streets every X amount, that, that doesn't give you as many places for cars to exit and leave, it doesn't give you as many places for cars to come in and go. So that's what the TDR has built into it that those neighborhoods built 1945 and beyond didn't have because they were focused on cars. You come and go by your car, you don't walk down to the trolley anymore, you don't walk down to the neighborhood store. And so it, it's, it's one starting point for us to look at in terms of, and, and I go back to one of the original comments I made was, pre-World War II, we allowed these middle housing types there anyway. So, and some of them still exist. I hear some of the concerns about cost, and we can't control without subsidy how much something's going to cost, but the one thing that we can do is make it so that you can build on existing lots. We have 50-foot-wide lots all over the old city areas that you can't build on reasonably with what we passed in RECODE. The setbacks are too big, the, the, the density, all of those things make it not as economically reasonable to build something new on those lots. And some of the, those TDR neighborhoods with 55 or 50-foot-wide lots and sometimes smaller, like I, like I pointed out earlier, the ones on Cornelia are all 37-foot wide, those people can't build a shed, much less a porch, an addition, or rehab a house without going and getting a pile of variances. So we passed a code that you can't build on these lots. And so that is one of the things that's baked into some of these proposals, and honestly, it's not enough because we still haven't addressed that, and I've asked for it multiple times, no offense, y'all, is, and I've put it in a spreadsheet, is there was a segment of the old code that allowed, that, that was for like the North Shore Town Center that reflected the, the dimensions of what we have in these old neighborhoods. But we passed RECODE, and we, we didn't do that, and we threw that out, and so now we make everybody get variances. And so we add to the cost and the time to be able to build. And if we don't, if we don't get things built on the inner-city lots that are vacant, I'm not talking about tearing down and replacing, we can't add supply to the demand. And, and the $1,400 a bedroom rental rates are based on the fact that you have 20-plus people asking to rent every unit that's out there. And so until we have supply to address that, it's not affordable to anybody. So this is certainly not all of the answers, but it's a start to a discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I want to follow on Councilwoman Ryder's comments. I agree. I think we all understand more housing in general, at a macro level, helps the whole market be more affordable. And to that end, I think, I think not including RN1's a mistake, and for a few different reasons. There's no, well, unless you found a principal use difference, I can't find one in the use measures. Mr. Berry?
Sure, I'll take another try to answer your question. So if I understood it right, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, they're both are allowed in RN1 and RN2. So a single-family dwelling is a permitted use in RN1 and RN2. A two-family dwelling is a special use in RN1 and RN2.
Thank you. Sorry. I don't want to cut you off.
Did that answer your question?
That does. Yeah. So to that end, I don't think there's a principal use difference between RN1 and RN2. We've heard a lot about renting, and we all know the challenges there. Renters and homeowners want the same benefits in RN1 neighborhoods that RN2, RN3, and others want. I think if this is a starting point, that's fine, but our starting point, if we do this, needs to be all of us in this together. And I don't think it does us any good to offer more access to people to live in traditional neighborhoods if we carve off a special RN1 neighborhood that doesn't participate in this. So I think excluding RN1 is, is just setting up more exclusion. I think it makes up more percentage than, I think, according to Lindsay's comments earlier, it makes up more opportunity than RN3 and RN4 combined. I don't think we need to carve off RN1. There's not any difference other than lot size for RN1 and RN2. So as a city, if we're going to provide access to everybody to live in different neighborhoods and provide a pathway to homeownership and to rent and live in every neighborhood, it needs to be every neighborhood. So if TDR is the, the, the existing kind of sphere we're looking at, we all need to grab hands and jump in this together. So I think RN1 needs to be added. Similarly, I think we are limited, this whole body knows we're limited in our toolset for rent control, but Minneapolis and St. Paul both just went through this similar effort, and from what I can tell, they included their equivalent RN1. Also, I think we can get creative, and unless somebody tells me otherwise with a legal background, I don't think state law prohibits us from extending pilots to small-scale developers who are willing to hold rental at a, as a percentage of AMI. So if we offer incentives for big developers to build housing with 100 units in it and hold rent at a certain percent of AMI for 20 years, there's no reason we shouldn't do that for a fourplex owner who's willing to provide affordable rent for 20 years. So we can get creative within the state law. I've said a lot of times, and there's been some objections in the past, and, and reasonable so, that, that pilots shouldn't be good incentives. I think they're great incentives. I think they should be applied to big developers and small developers. The, the reason I think that that idea is really important is because if you follow all of this through, put the character change of a neighborhood aside. Please don't quote me on that, somebody will, but that's a big deal. What we want to make sure is, if we go through this, we add affordable housing in the neighborhoods where everybody wants to live. And if you don't find some way to control rent or offset or mitigate both demolition and just general market forces, we're still just relying on macro level, more supply, eases demand, eases prices, which is true. But if we can get a bit more acute with our incentives, pilots, for example, go through a third-party review. We don't necessarily have to do that. We understand that there's a need for affordable housing. I think we should get very creative. And that is a way, if you think about it, what we want to prevent is somebody buying a single-family home that may be old but still livable, tearing it down, building a fourplex, and then charging rates that are unaffordable. I think that's what we, on a perfect world, would like to avoid. So I think we can offer some more carrots to do that. And so we had an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we have our general capital operating budget, if for a housing budget, and we can't offer incentives that are allowed by state law and other paths, I think that's a creative way that we can achieve all of this. And again, encourage you to look at Minneapolis, they, they did something very similar, not just for renters, by the way, but for home prices. So if you built a house that someone's going to own, they, they, they max the price you could use at a percentage of living so that you could become a homeowner as part of this as well, and not just become a renter. Both can be possible, I think, within our state law. So RN1 should be included, and we should get more creative to make renters have more access to this, not just a, a new opportunity for developers who are much needed and great and helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, I really appreciate the discussion. I want to thank all my colleagues on council for their good questions, which answered many of the ones that I had. I want to do some background work and look at some track records of some other cities that may have implemented this. So Optico's designs, can you give me like a list of cities or good examples that I can go back and, and kind of see how it's progressed there? You can do that, okay. And then the other question I had has to do with putting it on vacant lots, demolishing a house, or then transforming a house for multi-units. Do you know offhand if any of the cities that have implemented these designs have basically just allowed them on vacant lots and excluded demolition or transitioning or remodeling houses?
I do not. I do not.
I, I do not, I do not.
Okay, that's one piece of information I would like to have because we've talked about those differences. So, I would like to see if any other cities have, have done it that way and how that has worked. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tester.
New technology. Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. You know, first of all, I think what Councilmember Smith discussed about smaller developers, I mean, a lot of them, the majority of them actually went away after 2008. And we lost a lot of our talent, skilled trades, all of those over the last 15 years. And so, I definitely think as we're working to try and meet this need, it does create an opportunity for smaller, you know, affordable housing developers, developers in general, which shouldn't be a bad word, to be able to come in and create opportunity. And I see people out, like our nonprofit seed in the audience, who is, is working to address this issue, which is, which is amazing. And so, I, I do think incentivizing that. And just to clarify, you know, my earlier comment on, you know, unintended consequences, there always are going to be, but does that supersede, you know, what we need to try and accomplish? Because at the end of the day, we are trying to solve a remarkably huge issue, but we've got to also focus on expanding our tax base. It, it is those tax dollars that are allowing us to address the social needs, the social, the mental health, all of the social services that we need to provide, focusing on revitalizing neglected areas. It is disinvestment that created blight, that created the loss of, or that created opportunity deserts. And so, it's, it's that and property values, which, you know, they will increase as we're able to revitalize areas, but that also creates equity. It creates generational wealth that, you know, underserved communities clamor for and, and are able to help provide, you know, retirement, education, healthcare, those types of things. So, I know it's a fine line, but, you know, I really, I, I just wanted to sort of clarify that that is a perspective that I'm coming from as well, that to Councilmember Ryder's point, we have to look at, at all areas across the city. You know, there are a lot of areas that, you know, won't be opportunities because it is too costly. So, you know, really trying to extend and, you know, create opportunities so everybody can rise and hopefully find a path to success.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
I wanted to bring up two other issues that were raised earlier. One about what are we seeing that's going on around the country? And there's one book that was brought to my attention in the last month that exposes kind of a trend that has taken place throughout the country around this issue. It's called Selling Off California: The Untold Story. And the dynamics just seem so similar to what we're experiencing here because what they saw happening was this push for new developments and loosening of some regulations to allow developments to more easily be built. And it was largely fueled by, you know, a coming together of, of our leaders in real estate and our leaders in the big tech world. And so, I was like, man, that's sounding like Knoxville these days. And the idea around it was not that, you know, this influx of new housing stock would necessarily provide the affordable housing that the community needed, but it was following a model of what they're calling trickle-down affordable housing. So, it's like, you know, we don't expect it to be built as affordable housing, but eventually in 20 years, it could provide affordable housing. And so, there's been a lot of pushback by housing justice advocates around the country that have concern because they want to see affordable housing development, they want to see a diversity of options in the housing market, but they also want to ensure that affordability is prioritized and that we're not changing regulations to allow new developments that will be high-end developments and will price people out of their neighborhoods and essentially constitute gentrification. And so, that's what I have been struggling with, are the positives that I see from this, but also some of the negative consequences that we've seen in other areas. And just approving the plan as is, I cannot offer my constituents any assurances that that would not happen, that we would not see a form of gentrification happen in, in neighborhoods. So, that's one of my main concerns, and I'm, you know, continuing to try to think of what protections do we need in place. And I think bringing up the South Waterfront is a really good example, but it's an example of, of, you know, developments that have, have brought such a concern that we approved a review of that process, of the administrative review process for the South Waterfront Form-Based Code. And I'm worried that we're developing a process that mirrors how we work with our Form-Based Code and others. And we're not necessarily, we're not hearing from the folks who live in SW1 and taking into consideration the impacts on neighborhoods. I'm even thinking about the, the parking recommendations here are much different than what we've seen play out on the South Waterfront in terms of when we, when we increase density in an area and, and bring in more residential and commercial options, because I imagine this development would attract both. Planning for that density beyond the parking space requirements that are in this proposal. So, I, I feel like we need more time.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes, there's a lot to study here. I'm still in the information gathering stage and analysis stage. A lot here I really like. I am concerned about unintended consequences as well. I just only want to add, just to kind of keep things in perspective, and this has already been alluded to by the mayor and staff, is, you know, we've got a huge housing problem. Passing this will just solve a fraction of that. And I may, in the end, support it, may not, we'll see, but I've got a completely open mind, and I know it's, it's well-intended. Also, as alluded to by some of my other council people, though, is like, we're going to have to get bolder and look at places outside these neighborhoods because if you listen to the numbers about the available lots, it's, I guess it's your definition of what would be a significant increase in, in the housing stock, but it's going to be a fraction of what we need. And as we talked about, Councilperson Fugat mentioned it earlier, other council people have had, is we really need to look at locations mainly along the corridors because there's a lot of blighted property along the corridors, there's property for sale, there's retail that's gone out of business, a lot of it's not coming back, there's big swaths of, of parking lots, and that stuff is, needs to be available for housing. And we would solve a lot of our infrastructure questions, a lot of impact on existing neighborhoods, quality of life, actually, for the residents of people that would live on those housings where the infrastructure is already there. And I know the city also is already looking at that, and we have actually done some of that already. I'm not pretending that it's going to be easy because it's going to take a little bit of a paradigm shift. A lot of the property on the corridors is more expensive. But we really do need to look at a way where we can incentivize developers and make it appealing to them to really look at this space. So, I just wanted to, I guess, kind of add that as a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I wanted to echo and say that I agree that looking at the corridors and examining what barriers we have there to development, develop, developing additional housing there. We've had a couple of successful new residential areas in commercial zones in my district recently, out in the Washington Pike area across Waltham Depot, I've mentioned that before. But I want to point out the reality of that. Our CG zones is, are 2.52% of our acreage, 2.52%. Our commercial highway zoning is 6.47. So, if you add those two together, commercial highway and commercial zone, that is about 6, 7, 8, 9%. RN2 is 8.85%. So, taking the CG and the CH all together, all of them, is equivalent to this, to the RN2. The RN1 is 26.07 of our land. So, you know, I just think we need to be realistic about it because what we've talked about here tonight and what started the conversation was, there's not one solution, so we have to do all the things. So, I think we have to do them, and we can only do so much simultaneously because we have the capacity to not do, you know, we did that, it was called Recode, and I think we made some mistakes. And so, I don't think it's a bad thing to do things in bite-size changes, and maybe some of those are orbiting. I just want to be realistic about how much land that is.
Well, I never said it was going to be easy.
I didn't say that you said it was going to be easy. I just, I wanted everybody to know what little we're talking about. That's all.
Well, I know that, but I also think that we need to double down and focus on developing this blighted property that's available on these corridors. And there's obstacles in the way, of course, but I maintain the position that we haven't done enough to explore that. And I don't have the answers to all of it, but I have been talking to developers one-on-one to see what the, what the obstacles are and what the realities are. But I do maintain that we haven't done enough to explore that possibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I agree, I think Councilman Ryder just made a, a great case for the addition of RN1 to add that into the mix. I agree with everything you said, but on a serious note, I do think RN1 should be included for 1,000 reasons, but, but that, but that's one of them. It's the largest opportunity in the city, and if we're going to start, we should start with at least a piece of the largest opportunity in the city included. And I don't have any more questions, but I just have a comment. I think there's plenty of room, just in our couple hours, to find disagreement among all of us, and I think we've found it in a few places. So, I just want to applaud staff, planning commission, and city staff for the journey you're on with all the opinions and perspectives in different neighborhoods. We're doing the easy part of this. So, I appreciate what y'all have done. It's methodical. I think it makes a ton of sense. I think each of us would like to tinker a little bit around the edges of it and have more people weigh in on it, but the arc of this is very good. So, I applaud you, no matter how many times it takes us to bang it around up here, but I think you all have done a, a very good job to start.
Thank you. I had a question. I know in Optico's, there was a lot of discussion about the entryway and how important that is. And so, when I went back and looked through, and I think there's even mention of, of frontage types and discussions about porches and stoops, but I'm, I'm curious, are those required in the proposal? Because it looked to me like you had an option of several things, but you didn't necessarily have to do those two. And I know that there's a lot of importance in that frontage piece, and just wanted to make sure that I understood whether that's required or not.
That was definitely something we toyed with. It is not a specific requirement right now. In these standards, it is an option to select from, but the standards do still incorporate the requirement for having ground-level entrances oriented towards the street. They may just not be off a porch or a stoop.
And I guess that when they're talking about that, they're really talking about doors and windows, less about a, a porch or a stoop.
Yes.
Okay. One of the other things I, I noticed in, in our discussion, and I appreciate everybody's comments and points, the, the ability for people to know that this is going on is really important, and I, and I really appreciated Dr. Brooks, or Director Brooks, clarifying that for us, that if you go through this administrative process, that you have an opportunity to appeal to planning commission, which would then lead to, to council. So, I think having a kind of review process and laying that out is really important. So, I really appreciate you clarifying that with us. I do think that giving some notice so people know that's going on. So, the discussion today about having a sign put out, I think, was a really good one that was brought up. The other takeaway that I thought of as well is, you know, obviously, we need housing, and missing middle is a start, and I think we've heard everybody talk about this being an incremental approach. And I really do appreciate all the discussion about this proposal, but then also thinking about things that we could do along the corridors and the mixed use that we had provided for in Recode. So, I, I also want to be able to explore that, too, because I think we have such a demand that's out there, addressing supply and finding places where we can address supply in a more affordable way, I think, is, is really important. And looking at those blighted properties along the corridors, you know, underutilized, I think there's a lot of opportunities there because we do have, you know, successful businesses along the corridors, and going to mixed use with residents above that, I, I think would be great. So, looking at everything, I think, and that's been said several times, too, looking at everything as we, as we approach this would be good. I do want to just thank everyone for their presentations. Chief Policy Officer Cheryl Ball, thank you. Director Brooks, Ms. McGrans, Mr. Berry, Ms. Crockett, thank you so much for your presentations and your presence today. Seeing no further questions, we'll go ahead and close, but I know that this discussion will continue. And so, we'll keep it, keep it going, and we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.